Good evening and welcome to the first town council meeting of two thousand twenty-two. I am calling the meeting to order and the time is seven oh-two. The first item on our agenda is the flag salute. And council member Arzan will introduce our guest.
Thank you, Chair. Sophia Theresis is eleven-year-old seventh grader at Marshall Fundamental Secondary School. She is a member of Girl Scout Troop Two Thousand Sixty-one, which has served the community this year through a beach cleanup and a diaper drive benefiting Elizabeth House. She participates in many activities in school as well, serving as the Vice President of the National Junior Honor Society, middle school representative of the Drama Club, and a member of the Library Advisory. Sophia's hobbies include singing, acting, learning new languages, and making lists. Go ahead, Sophia.
Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you so much. Thank you. It feels good to do something that we used to do. So that that really makes me feel like things are moving forward. Okay, we're gonna go on to roll call now. Corresponding Secretary, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Let's start with Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Amy Lyford.
Present.
Nick Arnzen.
Present.
These are all our council members, of course. Dorothy Wong, I am here. Hannah Petrie.
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Sandra Thomas. Dr. Thomas?
She's here.
Okay, thank you. Veronica Jones.
Here.
Chris O'Malley. Daryl Aranda.
Here.
Thank you, Madeline Barber.
Here.
Alan Peck.
Here.
Reginald Wilkins.
Here.
You, thank you. Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Thank you. Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Diane Marcusson.
Here.
I think everybody's here. We have a quorum.
Oh, great. We have a full house. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We're gonna move on to the approval of the tonight's agenda. Councilmember Knapp.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Good evening, council and Altadena community. The Executive Committee met on January eleventh to set tonight's agenda, which was circulated to you on Friday, January fourteenth, with a return date of yesterday with any changes or corrections. I have the following changes that I want to announce first, and then I believe we have a change in the agenda numbering. So instead of Officer Keller, who I do see here, Officer Boyd will be presenting for him. Instead of Doug Cauliflower for the Chamber of Commerce, it will be the President of the Chamber, Dr. Sandra Thomas. And down under Special Presentations, instead of Zoe Axelrod, it'll be Ayala Scott from L.A. County Regional Planning. I do believe we have another change to the agenda, Diane.
Yes. We had a very last-minute request from Grant Power, who is the applicant for the item that we will be reviewing on our Land Use Committee section, that he be moved up earlier in the agenda. And where we can accommodate those requests, we we will. I'd like to suggest that we move the land use item, six dot two, up under Public Safety Reports between Public Safety Reports and Community Reports. I think what that does is move everything that becomes four. And four dot one. And then four moves to five, five moves to six. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, we'll figure out the numbering. Yeah, I think that's right, though.
Okay, so I would like to ask to make that amendment to the agenda.
Great, thank you, Diane. Are there any other changes or corrections that we've not heard yet? Seeing none, I move that we approve the January eighteenth agenda as amended.
Second.
There was a lot of seconds, so you can take whomever. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Dr. Thomas, second. Okay, so I, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna move on to our Officers' Report, and the first officer is the Chair. It's me. I am going to give a very short little thing here. I wanna just say I'm honored to be chairing this council. I've worked with the council for the last four years, and I really enjoy it, and I really do try to work hard and put forth a good effort. And I will continue to do that. I don't take it lightly, and I really enjoy all of you, and I look forward to working with all of you in two thousand twenty-two. Thank you. That's my report, and now we'll move on to the Vice Chair, Victoria Knapp.
Good evening, everyone. By way of introduction, I'm Victoria Knapp. I'm a Census Track Representative for Census Track Forty-six oh-one. I serve with Amy Lyford. I've been on the council for six years. I'm also involved with our public schools here in Altadena and throughout POSD. And my family and I have lived up in Altadena for a little over ten years. So generally speaking, I will have a short report to provide to you, but tonight I just wanted to do by way of introduction who I am and how how long I've served on it, on the Town Council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna go to our Recording Secretary, Nick Arzen.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Good evening, everybody. I'm Nick Arnzen. That's all you need to know. I'm gonna move on to let you know I sent out the minutes for December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one to the entire council. Actually, Councilmember Knapp did, and it was included with your agenda. I received no comments or changes on them. Are there any to be noted tonight? I see no hands. I move that we approve the December twenty-one, twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one minutes as distributed.
My second.
Daryl's second. So we got a second by Daryl. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So the minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Now we move on to our corresponding Secretary, Dorothy Wong.
Treasurer report first.
Oh, I am so sorry.
No worries.
I skip our treasurer. Okay.
I'm Chris O'Malley. I'm easy to skip.
Well, you need that report. We have so much money.
So much. We started the month off with one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and fifty cents. There are two expenses this month. One to reimburse the Election Committee for materials used in the last election. That's a hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. And then nine ninety-nine for Go Daddy, bringing our balance for this month to one thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. That's my report.
Okay, and we don't have to vote on that, so I'm just going to mark mark that report as received and filed as presented. Next, next is Dorothy Wong, our corresponding secretary.
Thank you, Chair. So I am just gonna give you a quick update on things happening in January and a highlight in February. So I'm gonna start out with February, going backwards a little bit. Our Greater L.A. Homeless Count for Altadena has been postponed due to COVID concerns and organizing. So Altadena's Greater L.A. Homeless Count will take place on February twenty-second at eight P.M. And this is a great time to volunteer. So the county is actually asking, or LASSA is asking, for people to volunteer as teams. So like if you're a family team or someone that's already in your bubble, so to speak, wants to, you know, participate and volunteer, we need volunteers. Altadena, last I checked, had thirty-seven people volunteering, but again, things are being sorted out again. So Tuesday, the last Tuesday in February two-twenty-two, is basically two-twenty-two-twenty-two is the Greater L.A. Homeless Count Altadena. And so if anyone wants to volunteer on sort of the boots-on-the-ground committee, we're also putting together an outdoor sort of drive-through pattern, so different COVID protocols. So we'll see where we're at. So again, the space is booked right now at Loma Alta Park. So if you have any questions, I'll be posting stuff on the website. A quick update that Edison is doing pole replacements and actual covered conductors. They'll be starting some work in the Meadows community. We'll be having a meeting if you want to learn more about that tomorrow at six P.M. And I will post the link on the website if anybody wants to learn more about the work that Edison's gonna be doing in our community. As well, Akona on one twenty-five will be hosting Edison and Clean Power Alliance, the pros and cons. Also, you'll be learning more about the Athens rate increases and composting. We're gonna learn a little bit about that today. Just a quick highlight on AB thirteen eighty-three. And then L.A. County Public Works Slow Street Signs. If you have any questions or want to learn about the updates, that'll also be happening at the Akona meeting next Tuesday at seven P.M., akonaonline.org. Backing up a little bit, this Thursday, Altadena Heritage will be doing a program on historic landmark designation. So if you want to learn more about that, that'll be Thursday, January twentieth at seven P.M. I'll also have it on our Altadena Town Council website calendar, and you can also find that at altadinaheritage.org. January thirty-first, the Devil's Gate Dam Southeast Entrance Improvement Project. If you want to learn more about that, devilsgateproject.com. January thirty-first. I said I was only gonna pick three things, and that concludes my report. So if you want to put anything on the website, you can email me, altadinadorothy.wong@altadinatowncouncil.org. Thank you.
And thank you, Dorothy, for that. We're gonna move on to to Public Safety Reports. We have Officer Keller from the CHP, who will introduce his.
Isn't this where we change the regular order of business?
No, after this.
After this? Okay, sorry.
Officer Keller.
Good evening, all. Officer Keller with the California Highway Patrol, Altadena Station. Hope everyone's doing well. It's great to see you guys. I'm sorry I missed you guys last month. Didn't get the invite, didn't know if it was canceled or not, but we got that all taken care of. Thank you very much, Ms. Knapp, for sending me the information this month.
Would you like me to show the video first and then go on to introductions, or how do you want to do it?
Let me, I'll do the collision reports, and then I'll introduce Officer Bay, and then we'll do the cool video.
Perfect.
I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. Last month in December, there were twenty traffic collisions. It's a higher number than normal due to traveling and families coming in and going out. There were three traffic collisions with injuries, five parties in total injured. There were five hit-and-runs during the month. One of them was a vehicle versus, it's considered vehicle versus ped they're doing right now, but it was a dog being walked. Pedestrian was injured. It was a dog. Other than that, it was a fairly tame month. We had a little bit of rain there. The safety message for tonight is, check out your guys' tires. Hopefully, we'll get some more rain. Rain days, we get calls left and right for traffic collisions because slipping and sliding everywhere, oil comes straight up from the roadway and gets you when you least expect it. School is back in session. Please be aware. Notify your friends, neighbors, family. Keep an eye out for children, families, parents walking to and from school in your school zones. We will be out in force. Like Ms. Knapp said, we have a new cops officer that will be assisting me in enforcement and patrol in your community. Officer Bay is with me tonight. He will be at schools, community meetings, and events. We want to get the word out to have us come to whatever venue you guys are at, whether it be school, work, business, or play. We have so many presentations, ranging from distracted driving to Smart Start classes to the Age Well Drive Wells. And we'd love to be a part of the community, get our message out there, and keep everybody safe. Without further ado, I will turn it over to Officer Brian Bay, our newest cops officer.
Great. Thank you, Officer Keller. I don't know if anyone can hear me using our state-issued tablet, so hopefully you guys can hear me and see me okay. If not, let me know. I am Officer Brian Bay. I recently on with the department for over two years, coming from Northern California, San Jose, to be specific. But now I'm currently helping Officer Keller patrol the the area. And I'm very excited to get to know everyone, to attend these monthly meetings, and to provide, you know, the the statistics involved as well as as any kind of event reminders and anything else that that the community might need. I understand that this is the month of January and that everyone's getting back to school, so I'm excited to kind of show my face around. And I'll also provide my contact information, my email address, in the in the chat section. So if anyone has any questions for me as well as Officer Keller, you're more than welcome to give me an email or shoot me an email, and I will respond with a response.
Officer Bay, will you let the community know what COPS stands for?
Sure. COPS is considered, it's an acronym, so it's Community Oriented Policing Service. So that's that's what the acronym stands for. So that means that Officer Keller and myself are gonna be really kind of geared towards helping, you know, with the community with either an education, enforcement, anything else, all the other events that Officer Keller and programs that the California Highway Patrol has to offer, as in the the programs Officer Keller provided earlier. That's that's kind of what that stands for. That's why, you know, this is more of our specific, we'll just say, capacity within the California Highway Patrol. We're also gonna be helping out our our PIO, which is Public Information Officer as well. So we're gonna be kind of tagging along with some events, so you'll see our face with him. More social media activity for our Altadena, our CHP Altadena, social media Instagram page. So more more to come with that. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Now we were, oh, I see, Dorothy.
Hi, thank you. Quick question. Is there a list of the different services, educational programs that you guys have? Is that listed online or? Because one question I would have is if you teach pedestrian safety at all or anything with the schools?
We have, we have presentations and events geared towards everything ranging from pedestrians, bicycles, driving. I'll send you a list. I know we have a list somewhere. I'll send it to you, Ms. Wong, when I get to the office tomorrow and get started with that.
Thank you.
Other info, Officer Boyd, who was the officer that kind of took over B two, he is still with the department. He is now our PIO. He's gonna be, he's replacing Officer Vince Ramirez, who has retired as of December. He'll be greatly missed, but I believe Officer Boyd will be a great fill-in for his spot, and we'll all be working together, so you'll see us all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more questions? Victoria, did you have a question or were you ready for the video?
No, I was going to just confirm that Officer Boyd had moved into the role of PIO, which Officer Keller communicated. So if you guys are ready, I'm ready to. Any other questions? Okay, so I noticed on Instagram that CHP Altadena had put out a very short but cute video, so we're gonna play that for you as an intro to our CHP.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. Our super team, we're glad you're with us. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, and that video was a lot of fun to make, and like I said, we want to be involved in the community. We want to do fun stuff like this, as well as be out there to keep everyone safe.
Thank you, and I see that you put your email in the chat. Is that your contact information? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for all you do. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Altadena Sheriff's Station. Captain Williams.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Thanks for having me here. Hope everybody's having a good year so far. So I have a few things I want to talk about, so just bear with me. First, I'll talk about crime. Right now, in January, things are off to a good start, because crime overall in Altadena is down forty percent compared to how it was in January of last year. So we're off to a pretty good start with forty percent down. That's especially the case with property crimes is actually down also. So we hope to try to keep it that way. However, catalytic catalytic converter thefts continue to be a problem. It's a problem throughout the whole county, state. I understand it's a nationwide problem, so we hope to do something about that, which kind of leads me to the first thing I want to talk about. I remember, or if you may remember, last council meeting, I talked about hoping to put together a catalytic converter etching event. We were shooting for January twenty-second. However, things didn't quite work out, so we had to push it. And I want to share my screen. We actually have a date for our event, so I'm trying to do this here. If anyone can see this, on February fifth, we're gonna have a catalytic converter etching event. So we hope to start it at nine, nine A.M., then go all the way through four P.M. And it's gonna be at the Public Works Facility right there on two-five-two Mountain View Street in Altadena. They were very gracious to let us use it. Just check out the flyer. There's a website where you can register on Eventbrite and pick a time when you want to come in. But I will say if it fills up, because they tend to fill up pretty fast, if someone shows up without an appointment, we certainly will not turn them away. So we'll keep etching for as long as we can. So pass the word on. It's already on our social media, and we hope to get it out to other platforms so people can come to, come to this event. The person that's handling it is Sergeant Bush, and he will help set anyone up that, you know, calls. But this is one event. We we don't want to make it just a event where people can come. We kind of want to make it a community event. So anyone that wants to come just to get information or just to see how it's going, they're certainly welcome to to do that. If anyone wants to serve as a sponsor in some way, just contact Sergeant Bush, and he'll let you know what we can do. The one thing I want to talk about when it comes to catalytic converter etching, it's not a sure way to keep people from taking your catalytic converter. But it is a way for us to help investigate and prosecute the people if we find them with a catalytic converter that's etched. Just easy way to get a prosecution. However, there are some ways you can protect your catalytic converter by putting a cage over it. We hope to have that information for you at this event. But in the meantime, there, there's a place locally that will actually do it for you, but it it comes at a price. Colorado Muffler. They're at two-one-six-five East Colorado. The phone number is six-two-six-four-four-nine-seven-seven-seven-nine. I talked to the owner of this place, and he said he does a lot of cages around the catalytic converters, mainly for Priuses, for Prius and trucks. And give them a call or contact him. He'll let you know how much it costs to get that in there. It's probably gonna be around maybe two hundred to three hundred bucks, maybe. But as you guys know, a catalytic converter, if you're taking away, it could cost you as much as two thousand to get it repaired. Without that cage over it, it takes someone less than a minute to cut it off. If they have it on, it takes them over an hour, so it kind of works as a deterrent. We actually had a case last week where I wasn't able to get the video, but you can see on surveillance where someone goes underneath the car. They see that person has the cage on their catalytic converter, and they just, they left to go move on to the next person. It does work. And the other thing I want to talk about, if you guys may remember, back in two thousand sixteen, this is July of two thousand sixteen, it was a sad event where a young man was shot and killed and accidentally in the crossfire. Salvador Asparza. And of course, this was in two thousand sixteen, but we do not want to forget about this. So I'm going to share my screen and post this, this, show you guys this flyer. If everyone can see that. Back in February of last year, Supervisor Barker, she reinstated the reward and actually raised it a little bit for information leading to the arrest and conviction of the person responsible for this young man's murder. What we want to do is kind of rejuvenate interest in this case. So we hope to get, we've already put it on our social media. We hope to get this bulletin blasted throughout the whole county. We hope that someone can give information on this case that can lead to the arrest and conviction of the of the people responsible for this young man's murder. We do not want to forget about this. I have spoken to the homicide detective on this case personally, and he's made it very clear that he's looking for any information available. We as law enforcement, as peace officers, we can't do it alone all the time. We certainly need the public's help. And we want to ask the public to help us in this in this situation also, so. Please take a look at this, spread the news, trying to get it out to as many people as possible, and we hope to keep in contact with the family and let them know what we are doing to solve this, solve this 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 crime. That's all I have to share for now.
Okay. Thank you, Captain. Daryl and I handed out flyers in our neighborhood on Sunday. So we went around and handed them out, so we're trying to help. But we need the both of those flyers sent to either Councilmember Wong or myself so that we can put them on our website.
No problem at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Chairman?
I think there's another question.
Questions? Oh, okay, Sylvia.
Thank you, Captain Williams. Quick question for you. Is there a possibility to get a list of the vehicle types or models that are more susceptible to these type of crimes? I know you mentioned the Priuses and trucks, but I don't. I know you mentioned the Priuses and trucks, but I don't know if there's certain models or manufacturers?
Yeah, I could, I could certainly get your list, but I could tell you right offhand, Prius are the main ones. And trucks mainly Ford F-150s or Chevys, those are easy to get under because they're, they're raised up a little bit higher. The Prius, they are the main ones. They can get more money when recycling those than other ones. Talking to the guy at Colorado Muffler, he does not do certain cars, older model Hondas and Toyotas. But he can certainly recommend places for you to go get that done. But to be honest with you, if anybody, any catalytic converter, they'll get some amount of money for it. So people are targeting every single car. But I'll certainly try to, I'll certainly try to get you a better list.
So it could apply to anybody, whether you have a Lexus or?
Any car, yes. Any car. They are targeting every car. There are some things that people can do, like parking in your garage. Surveillance certainly helps. Having in a place well lit. But if you watch videos of people, and there's certainly a lot of videos of incidents where people are coming up, they just crank up the car, they go underneath and zip, zip, and they're out in less than a minute, so. In that, in Altadena, we had forty-seven catalytic converter thefts in 2020. And in 2021, we had sixty-three. So that's a big increase. And hopefully, the things that we're doing now can lower that number. And we're open to all ideas also.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? And I can't see all both screens. So if someone has a question? No more questions? Okay, we're going to, thank you, Captain. We're going to move on to fire. Marie Grecken?
Yes, good evening. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
I am good. And I also wanted to, just before I start giving you the report, I just wanted to, I believe Chief Saboda, one of our Battalion Four chiefs, is also here. So I just wanted to introduce him and let you know that he was here. But I will, I'll have him say a few words when I'm done. The December fire report, there were a total of three hundred and thirty-one responses in Altadena. Two hundred and eighty-one of those calls were medical, and we transported two hundred and twenty-three patients. We had five fires. One fire, I didn't have, I was not able to find any details on it, but it did not result in any damages. On the fourteenth, we had a pole fire on Homewood Drive. We had a vehicle fire on the sixteenth, and we had a trash fire on the twenty-first. And then we had a dryer fire in the laundry room of an apartment building on Figueroa on the thirty-first. And then we have eleven traffic collisions that we had responded to, and those are all listed there for you. I did add, I know I've told you this periodically, but I did add a statement underneath all of the traffic collisions, just because I don't want there to be any confusion. Where I've listed two streets in the past, I don't know if people were assuming that it was in the intersection. They're not necessarily collisions that occur in the intersection. The way that I report them when it's two streets is the first street listed is the street where the collision occurred. And the second street listed is the closest cross street. And that's the cross street that's either put in the system by the captain or it's the cross street, and usually it's the same. Or it's the cross street as reported by the nine-one-one caller. So sometimes the, the nine-one-one caller gives us the information of, you know, it is on such and such street, just west of such and such street. So they'll give us that information. And that is it for the report, unless there's any questions. And then I would just like Chief Saboda to say a few words to you.
Yes, are you?
Oh, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt. I'm sorry.
It's fine. Go ahead.
I'm Ted Saboda. I'm Battalion Four A. There are three chiefs here. I'm one of them. And we're off of Gold Avenue in Lockney out of Flint Ridge. And my computer does not have a video, and my cellphone camera does not work. So I apologize. But I'm here listening, and I'm open to questions if you have any.
Okay, are there any questions? I don't see any questions. Okay, so thank you. And if someone has a question, you can speak up because I can't see all the hands. Okay, I think there are no questions. Thank you. Thank you so much, Marie. And Ted, I can't see your last name.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you. Thank you for your report and all that you do for our community. Okay, we're going to now move on to the item that was that's going to be taken out of order. And I think it becomes item number four, and that's land use. And I'm going to turn it over to Diane.
Right. I have a couple of things first before we get on to the project real quick. I wanted to remind everybody that there is a public Owens, Owen Brown grave site meeting every Tuesday at six PM. The next one will be February ninth. And if you're looking for the agenda or information on prior meetings or anything like that, you can go to regionalplanning, planning.lacounty.gov, and then slash agenda, and then slash OBG, which is Owen Brown Grave. Right? So it's, it's as you would for getting to regional planning, planning.lacounty.gov. And then just slash agenda and slash OBG, and it'll give you all the information on the meetings and all of that. Okay, the other thing I just wanted to mention as we're starting a new year is just reminding everybody that we are very lucky and grateful to have the Land Use Committee that we're able to interact with the county and have them help us give feedback for all of our projects as we're going to do tonight. You know, that's a, it's, it's a, an item that they grant us to do, and we're very grateful for it. It's not a given, as you all know, it's not a requirement, but we really, really appreciate it. And so now we're going to move on to the item we reviewed at land use in December, which is for the project located at twenty-three ninety-nine Olive Avenue. And Veronica, I'll pass that over to you to introduce the presenter, or you can give the information on your, on your due diligence.
Okay, the, the proposed project is a non-conforming commercial parking lot that we reviewed in December, as Diane said. The block where the house will be built is surrounded by single-family homes. There are no other commercial buildings on this street. And Daryl can tell you our due diligence, what we did in the neighborhood.
So we went through the other day, and we were, we went knocking on doors, dropping off letters, the flyers at all of the residents. We spoke to approximately ten, eleven residents. The majority of them were Spanish-speaking, so we had very pleasant conversations. They were all enthusiastic about the house being built on the property. Two of them actually asked about how they could possibly participate in being put on the list to purchase that property or work with Habitat for Humanity about being a part of that. So I was, it was very, very nice to see that. And we also found a property that had a major construction going on, and Veronica and I will be researching more on that. But about the twenty-three ninety-nine, it was very well received from all the affected neighbors in the neighborhood. And they look forward to seeing it built.
And we left our, our flyers with our email addresses, and we have not received any public comment on the, on the property. And tonight, we have Grant Power and Brian Wong here from the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. And I'm going to share my screen. And Grant, I'm going to turn it over to you.
And I'm sorry, Veronica, real quickly, if I may, before we get into this, just so everybody's very, very clear, and all the people that are on the meeting with us, what we have been asked to look at on this project is a non-conforming usage of a commercial property. So it's to put a residential building on a commercial property, and that's all that we're being asked to look at. But it's my understanding, and I'm sure that the, you guys will answer that question, that you're complying with all of the CSD requirements that we have on the project. So go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, and they did, they did conform to all the CSD that was brought out in land use in December. So it's a pretty straightforward project. So Grant, you want to go ahead, and I will share my screen?
Yes. Well, thank you so much for inviting us to be here this evening to speak with you and, and hear from you in regard to this project. I'm Grant Power. I am Director of Real Estate Development for San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. With me this evening also is Brian Wong, our Executive Director. Brian, before I jump in, I'm wondering if you have words of greeting to offer?
Sure. Thanks. My name is Brian Wong, as Grant mentioned. I'm the relatively new Executive Director for the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. I've been here for about, oh, about nine months now. We are very excited to start our very first new build project in Altadena. We hope this is the first of many projects, and we look forward to partnering with you to help make a dent in the affordable housing crisis that we have in this area. But to tell you more about the specifics of this project, Grant Power will take over from here. Grant?
Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Veronica, can you share the screen at this point, please? Thanks also, by the way, for allowing us to move up in the agenda this evening on short notice. It's very, very much appreciated. I'm actually wondering if we can move to screen four, and this is in the interest of keeping our comments relatively brief this evening, so we can get to the, the business at hand for this meeting. Yes, right there. It's good. This is an aerial shot of the, of the site that we have acquired from Los Angeles County. And as you can see, it's vacant. It sits on Olive, at two-three-nine-nine North Olive, which is just south of Figueroa, just east of Lincoln. It's just over four thousand square feet. The tree cover that you see on the right-hand side is, has, is based on the property line, just, just over the property line next door, but overhangs the property at the moment. And we are proposing to construct one new detached, single-family home on this site. Next screen. This, the shots you see here are renderings of what the house is proposed to look like. It is a three-bedroom, two-bath home of about thirteen hundred plus square feet, including an attached two-car garage. And it covers the vast majority of the site, but there is a bit of open space on the back and on the side. Next slide, please. These elevations show a little bit more detail regarding the views on all four sides of the property of the home after construction. As you can see, our attempt here has been to develop a simple but robust house with a design that conforms to CSD criteria and is compatible with the neighborhood in size and appearance. The floor plan is shown, especially in the bottom right-hand side, to include the garage on the right, looking out over the street with the front door next to it, giving in, leading into a short hallway to a main living and dining area, an open floor format. And there are three bedrooms and two baths toward the back, toward the rear of the house. Next screen, please. As was mentioned earlier, what we are applying for from Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning is approval for a non-conforming use, as this is a site that is zoned commercial. And we are doing this based on the proposition that this is a, you said is compatible with the surrounding properties. Next screen. Here's our proposed, or actually our emerging timeline. We anticipate having approvals from the county sometime mid-year in 2022, and to start construction in the summer. Construction, we anticipate to include volunteers and sweat equity hours from an approved low-income family who will be our end buyer. We anticipate finishing construction in November and completing the resale of that house to a qualified buyer by the end of this year. Next screen. We have had questions in regard to how we go about marketing this project and selecting buyers. Our, our usual practice is to carry out an outreach program that makes this opportunity known and habitat ownership opportunities generally known to people in the community. We already have a pipeline comprised of interested folks, many of whom are qualified already to buy a home, whether it's this one or another habitat home across the valley. And on that list, which is extensive, are several people who live in Altadena. So one option that we also have is to look at those who are living in Altadena as possible candidates for this home at the appropriate time. So our core qualifying criteria, we're focused on families of low income, people who are perhaps in distressed housing or who are struggling to meet rent payments, and to go through our homebuyer education and meet other requirements associated with a partnership agreement, which they are asked to sign at the time that they apply to live in this house. Among other things, the buyer is asked to provide sweat equity hours, contributing either to the construction of the house itself or to time on another site where a house is also being built currently. We do place affordability restrictions on the property at the time of purchase. Typically, it will run thirty to forty-five years. And it's a covenant that enables us to ensure that that house will remain affordable for the long term, even if there is a change of hands along the way. As part of our marketing program, we also like to make available information about Habitat's other projects and programs which are provided throughout San Gabriel Valley. Those include the purchase of homes that are not new, but which have been acquired by Habitat and rehabilitated for resale and affordable ownership, as well as home repairs. We have a pretty robust and fast-growing home repairs program, and we look forward to seeing more of that, that service being provided in Altadena in the future. Next screen, please. So as, as mentioned, we are looking for county approval for a CUP. We are excited, very excited about having this as our first project in, new build project in Altadena, as Brian said earlier. And we are also hopeful that there will be other opportunities for Habitat to be of service to Altineans in the future. That's a lot of information in a short time. I'd like to push pause on my side and ask for any questions. Brian, also, if you have anything that you want to add or amplify on, please do so.
Are there any questions? I don't see any questions.
I have a question.
Oh, where are you, Dorothy? Okay, Dorothy?
Sorry. So thank you for this great presentation. I just wanted to, can you remind me again, Habitat for Humanity, as it relates to your eco-friendly design, like do you use reusable, or do you have a, what is your sort of climate-friendly message with this built?
I can speak particularly to the landscape aspect of this. We have sought to, we have a commitment to preserving existing substantial trees and to doing new planting that's appropriate and scaled to the property and making sure that there's green cover that matches the neighborhood and provides an eco-friendly presentation. As to materials, we are on a continuing search for new methods as builders that are respectful of the of the environmental crisis that we are in. And for for this property, we haven't yet had a chance to determine what the material changes need to be for construction. Our focus actually is more on the energy side, the energy efficiency, as well as trying to make this into an all-electric house.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you.
There any more questions? I don't see anymore. Okay, everybody received the material. I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there?
Can you put in the motion whether we're requiring conditions or not? And the name of the?
Okay.
The address and the number of the project, please?
So Darryl, do you have that or should I?
I make the motion to accept the project R P P L two zero two zero 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 seven three eight zero at two three nine nine Olive Avenue to go forward without conditions.
Is there any discussion? No, is it, Dorothy, were you seconding? Dorothy, second that motion? Okay, so the motion carries? I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those oppose? No, no oppose, any abstentions? Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the support. And we look forward to getting this project under construction and partnering up with some other projects in the near future.
Thank you for building in Altadena. And Habitat does some amazing work. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. And come back and tell us which Altadena resident got the house.
We'll be back. You can count on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you. Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you guys for allowing us to move that forward above everybody else. And now we're going to go to our community reports. And that's going to be the Altadena Library District, Nikki Winslow.
All right, good evening. Let me share my screen. See here. Right, let's see here. Sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once. All right, here we go. And I have a lot to cover tonight, so I'll try to go really fast, sort of, because I know I have five minutes. So good evening, council members, colleagues, and community members. Good to see all of you in the new year. Happy New Year to everyone. So right off the bat, of course, it seems like dun, 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 here we go, COVID. Thank you again. We have moved back to offering curbside services. Right before the new year, we decided to close the library to try to, you know, limit the spread and exposure of the coronavirus while it was surging yet again. So we're offering curbside six days a week. Just give us a call Monday through Saturday to place holds, set up appointments, and continue to see your library staff outside. One thing that has worked out in our favor, I would say, is due to our partnership with the Avison Charter School, we have been able to start testing our staff weekly. So January 3rd, everyone tested and didn't come back to work until they received a negative test. So it's also, you know, really assuring that we, when we do open the doors again, that all of our staff will be testing negative weekly, at least for the foreseeable future. So it is my hope that these rates drop as quickly as they rose and we can open the libraries again. But yeah, that's definitely impacting my presentation tonight on many of the things I was going to update on. So as I mentioned, we're closed for at least the end of this week. I would anticipate probably till sometime in February. But again, just keeping an eye on the numbers and trying to keep everybody safe and healthy. And when we do open, as I mentioned last month, we're going to have expanded hours in the new year. So new year, new hours. Highlighting mainly that we're going to be open Mondays and Tuesdays until 8:00 PM. So if you know people that were looking for those evening hours, we'll be able to accommodate that. Monday, Wednesday through Friday, 10 to 6:00, Saturdays 10 to 4:00. And then Bob Lucas will be open Monday through Friday, 10 to 6:00. And our passports services office continues to be very, very busy. So if you're looking to, and they've been handling all of their appointments outside, actually, since the beginning of this year, but they had so many, they didn't want to cancel. So they are still taking appointments if you're interested in updating or getting a new passport. So I would, I'm really excited to announce that our new Assistant Library Director started with us on January the 4th. She's actually here with us tonight. I asked her to jump into the room, so you guys could all meet her. Because as you know, I have rotated attending these meetings so that you get to see some of the other staff as well. So I'm happy to introduce Ashley Watts. I actually used to work with her for when I was with Glenda Library Arts and Culture. Her former position to coming over with us is the, she was the Senior Library Manager over Children's Services for all eight of their libraries. So Ashley, if you want to take a minute to introduce yourself, I will stop sharing for a sec, so you can all see her.
Hi, everyone. I'm so excited to be here at this meeting and in this city. I'm just really excited for all that is going to come. I know we're going to do some great things and will continue to do some great things here at the library. So I'm just really excited to support the staff and collaborate with them and get to work closely with Nikki again. So just really excited. You might be picking up on a little bit of an accent. I'm not from here. I am from New Orleans. So I'm always proud to announce where I was born and raised. But I have been here in California for going on four years now. And I've gotten to work with Nikki now majority of those four years. I think we only have about a year-ish gap in there. So I often joke with her that we're reunited and it feels good. And I just, it feels really good to be here so far. So thank you all for inviting me, and I hope to see you all again really soon.
Oh, I promise you will. All right, so back to that. So yeah, welcome, Ashley. Thank you. Yeah, and we will definitely be collaborating with town council quite a bit. So you'll you'll see both of us. So thank you, Ashley. All right, and we also have a new IT and Technical Services Manager, David Zierba, that started with us in mid-December, so rounding out our management team. Again, I think I've mentioned this before, we're still looking to fill our Office Manager position. If you know anyone that has a finance, accounting, payroll background that might be interested in working with me, because it's really great, right, Ashley? Please send them my way, because we're still looking to fill that position and round out the rest of the management team. Real quick, just touching on holiday closures, we will be closed for Presidents' Day, which is February 21st. Super quick building project updates. I'm really excited to announce that we hired our architectural team. We signed the contracts off and we are working with Anderson Brulee Architects. We actually have three council members that are sitting on our Community Focus Group, which is really exciting. We're looking at, I believe we meet again tomorrow to look at our early schematic design for the Bob Lucas branch. So work is carrying on in terms of design. In addition to that, through working with our bond issuance team, we've identified that we're going to bond out 21.125 million. Long story short, we're, I'm going to be meeting with Standard and Poor's tomorrow to get the library district's credit rating, which they believe is going to be very high since we're a developed district. So because of that, we'll be able to sell premium bonds, meaning we will bond out 21.125, but we should get 24 million in proceeds. So we'll have that full 24 million to renovate both libraries. So that's really exciting news, because the taxpayers only have to pay back that 21.125. And if for some crazy reason down the road, we would need the additional almost 3 million, we could bond out more, but we don't anticipate that. So that's really exciting news, because we're getting almost 3 million more than we're happy to pay back. So again, we're gathering community input through the Community Focus Group. And yeah, we have Veronica, who's representing historical on that group. We have Alan, Shana, actually, who's in the room tonight, is on that, as well as Chris O'Malley. So we have a lot of town council representation. Thank you guys for taking the time. All right, so real quick, we're in the middle of our recruitment for Poets Laureate. We're looking for two more of them to carry out the next two years worth of work. If you know anyone that lives locally or in this region that is interested in potentially serving in that capacity, please send them to our website. It's altadenalibrary.org-poetry. Applications are due February 11th. And you can always send them my way, too, if they want to talk to me with more questions. You haven't signed up for the Community Compost Hub? We, there are still more open spots. If you visit, and I'll put this in the chat, the the link to the site, there are still spots available. We can have up to 70 families in the Altadena area contributing to the compost. And we're going to have, we were going to do a kickoff event this month, but as you know, COVID. So on February 19th, the plan will be to have a kickoff event for people that want to come and ask questions. And of course, this is in coordination with Arlington Garden and LA Compost. We've been great partners. I'm not going to touch too much on programming, since I've probably already taken my five minutes. But, you know, again, Second Saturday is supposed to be happening in February. We'll see how it goes. I have to talk to the staff if we think that's even feasible at this point to gather people by the Second Saturday in February. If not, we'll reschedule that. But fingers and toes crossed that come March, we'll definitely be back Second Saturday. And all of the Second Saturdays for the rest of this season, you know, into the summer, will be held outside. So not a worry about indoor, but again, we'll see how things go. We are offering both book clubs, as well as a new meditation program virtually, as well as our Seed Library, which is the first Saturday of the month. So visit our website at altadenalibrary.org/programs to sign up for all of these virtual offerings. Youth and Family Services, again, most of that was being offered outside, so it's on hold for right now. We were hoping to bring all the programming back in February, but more information to come. Same thing with teen. And I did want to do a last slide, just like encouraging everyone to connect with us for the Altadena Connections updates that we do send out as e-blasts. If you have any news about local events, anything that's going on that you'd like to share with the community, please email us at news@altadenalibrary.org. And you can also add to our, an event to our community calendar. And of course, please sign up for Altadena Connections, so that you're getting these e-blasts when we release them. They're going out, I'd say, about every week or two, just depending on how much information we can gather. So the more people that contribute and collaborate with us on it, on this, the more information that we can all share. I think that's it. Yeah. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Sure.
Captain Williams, his flyer for the catalytic converter, go into the Altadena Connections.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a note.
Okay, anybody else with questions? No questions?
All right. Thank you for having me, as usual. Thanks, guys.
Welcome, welcome to Altadena. All right, thank you, Nikki. Okay, we're going to move right along to Parks and Rec. Sam Estrada.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So I just wanted to update everybody, just like the library. We are having some recent restrictions due to COVID for some of our programming and some of our facilities. So just giving you, want to give the update first. So for right now, our open gym is put on hold until at least February 1st. That date is pending at this time, but we are targeting February 1st to reopen our gyms for open gym usage at Loma Alta. The indoor rentals are also on hold at this time until February 1st. Hopefully, we can get some indoor rentals. We were supposed to have the homeless count, holding that at Loma Alta. However, that has been put on hold. But we are looking to still host it in the next month, hopefully. Also, the indoor access for the public building, for the public to come inside, has been put on hold for right now. So currently, the buildings are closed to the public, at least until February 1st. So all these dates are, these, February is first is kind of just a placeholder date for the time being. Hopefully, COVID, Omicron drops, so that way we can reopen our facility, so that we can also have indoor programming, which has also been put on hold. We had a lot of indoor recreation activities, as well as our contract class programs that were indoors until earlier this month. However, we do still offer our outdoor programming, so that is still ongoing. So currently, we're offering, as I mentioned, our contract class programs. So those are being offered in person, however they are outdoors. Also, we are having an option of virtual programming that these contract classes are offered, are being offered in some cases. So if people are interested, they can register for classes for the winter session. They go to parks.lacounty.gov/reserve, and you can check out all the classes that we have offering in person and online. We are trying to get our Tiny Top Program restarted. So hopefully, in the spring session, we can restart that. As of right now, the registration is open. If people do qualify, you would have to just register or apply, I should say, for our contract class. I'm sorry, our our Community Development Block Grant, which is the reason it is free. So, and that is for ages three to five years old. So hopefully, in the spring session, like I said, we can get it going. And we can get everything rolling with our in-person indoor programming. During our free programming that we offer during the week, Monday through Friday, we're also offering a free snack program from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM at both Farnsworth and Loma Alta Park. So they can just go to each park at that timeframe, and it is free for ages infant all the way up to eight years, 18 years of age. We also, as I mentioned, we have the free programming. It's our Everybody Plays After School program, and that's from 2:30 to 5:30, Monday through Friday. And it's a year-round, or it's a school-round program. So it never shut down, even though we did shut down our indoor activities. We still maintain the outside activities for the kids, so they do sports and recreation with the kids. They do arts and crafts, and that's being offered at Loma Alta and also Farnsworth Park. We also offer our winter session. We're offering a soccer clinic at Loma Alta, and that's going to be every Saturday morning. And it started on the second week of January. So we'll be going on our third week. And it's a great program. We have volunteers, youth that are helping with the program. So the supervisor, she got some local volunteers to assist with this program, so that way it could be a success. So it's, like I said, it's free. You go online to our parks.lacounty.gov website, and you can register. We still have limited space available. It is outdoors, and it's a great program. So, and it is in the morning, so they do start it at 10 o'clock in the morning. And then, I'm sorry, I forgot to give the ages. It's from six to eight. And then we have nine and 12-year-olds. And it's, it is free, so, but the spaces aren't limited. So we do go into the end of February with this program. So hopefully, as long as we continue strong with the registration with this free program, we'll be can be able to offer it for the community. So we've been getting great success with our basketball, and now we transitioned into soccer clinics. So it's a great thing that we have these people that are able to be part of it. And then lastly, we have our basketball league that we're looking to start February 5th. So registration is open for right now. So it is for youth ages six all the way to 12 years of age. And we are offering the practices to be at Loma Alta, and we're also offering it at some of our other parks. And we are taking teams as well. So it's looking like we hopefully can get it going as long as COVID dies down in the coming months. So hopefully, we can get it started February 5th. Like I said, registration is open. Um, red, like I said, registration is open, and that's about it. Um, we had a great winter programming, and we thank the community for showing up for that, and we're looking to have a great, um, twenty twenty-two. So hopefully, everything will shape up for the upcoming months, so that way we can get back to in-person programming. So that's all I got for right now.
Thank you, Sam. Are there any questions for Sam?
Not a question, but I just wanted to thank you guys for the snow day in the park. My kid loved it. It was fantastic.
Yeah, we had a great turnout, and we're actually looking to probably get more snow than we did this year. We didn't anticipate about three thousand people showing up, but, um, we had enough toys, but, uh, we'll probably be getting more snow for next year, um, after the great turnout that we had.
Great. Thank, we appreciate you. Thank you, Sam. Um, send any flyers to Dorothy, so, um, to Councilmember Wong, so she can put them on the website.
All right. Thank you.
You. And also remember, um, Nikki's also offered Altadena Connections.
Yes.
Information there. Okay. All right. We're gonna, if there are no more questions, are there any more? Okay, we're gonna move forward with, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, our very own Dr. Thomas. Congratulations as the new chair of our, our very great chamber.
Well, that was about half of my report right there. No, I'm kidding. Good evening, all. Um, to our, our dear chair Veronica Jones, congratulations Veronica and to her team. Um, Victoria, Vice President, and to the others. To my fellow council members, my name is Dr. Sandra Thomas, and tonight it's an honor to be here in a new capacity as the president of the Altadena Chamber of Commerce. Uh, before I prevent, present my report, uh, for those that don't know, I would like to announce the name of, of the, uh, my fellow officers at the chamber. The Vice President is Judy Matthews, Secretary is Marcella Vermontes, and the Treasurer is Craig Song. Uh, I would also like to recognize my immediate past Chamber President Doug Califfar. Is Doug here?
He's here.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm right on top of you.
Hi, Doug. Doug, who, who, who now we know is here seated, um, um, and I want to thank him for the job that he did as president of our chamber. So thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. And now, moving on, uh, because of the surge in, in, uh, COVID cases, we, like many, have had to postpone all of our in-person events. Our installation dinner, which includes honoring our twenty twenty-one Citizen of the Year, Deb Habistat, and our Business of the Year, the Altadena Farmers Market owned by Stacy Whitney, uh, has all been postponed until sometime in the spring. We are currently looking at a date of May twentieth. So stay tuned and watch, uh, for all events and date changes on our website and in our wonderful newsletter. We have no way to know now how the course of the virus will affect our plans, but we are looking forward to a, an exciting and fun year, and will continue to service our local businesses with the fervor and the passion that the Altadena Chamber's name represents. So with that, I thank you for listening, and I thank you for your time. That is my report, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Dr. Thomas, and thank all who gave their community reports. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to our special presentations. And we have first, we have the green waste update. Ed Chin from Athens.
It is gonna share his screen.
Hello, everybody. Let me just, uh, see if I can share that screen real quick. All right. I want to see if everybody can see the screen right here.
We can.
Hello, everybody. I, I want to thank Councilmember Wong for inviting me to give a quick presentation regarding Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, California Short-lived Climate Polluting Reduction Law. Uh, it is called short-lived climate pollutant, uh, is because, um, oftentimes with organics, when they, um, end up in a landfill in a environment that is depleted of oxygen, it creates methane gas. Methane's one of the, uh, short-lived climate pollutants that causes, uh, it's a primary cause for greenhouse gas. That's gonna be, um, a lot more potent than, uh, carbon dioxide. So, um, the legislature had envisioned Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, um, and it's followed by, um, a Senate, Assembly Bill eighteen twenty-six, as well as other California climate legislation, and it, as it, uh, impacts the waste and recycling industry. So I'm just here to give you a quick update about what this law is about. Right, next, next slide. So, um, this is a timeline of some of these legislative mandates, uh, starting with Assembly Bill, um, or AB thirty-two back in two thousand and six, uh, which kind of, uh, gives the Air Force Forces Board, uh, these, uh, ambitious goals for reducing the, uh, these greenhouse gases. Uh, AB eighteen twenty-six is the mandatory commercial organic recycling. Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three kind of follows that and, uh, uh, expand that eligibility to all residents, uh, starting January first of this year. So you may ask, what are some organic wastes? Uh, that includes all food scraps, yard trimming, anything that will naturally decay over time. Um, I hate reading slides, so I just thought I'd put the slide up, so, uh, for those of you that can read. Um, we, it also includes some, uh, fiber as well as, uh, food stained paper, napkin, um, even in pizza boxes, uh, the one beside that has grease on it, uh, that is compostable, and pretty much anything that will naturally decay, uh, in nature over time. So, um, this presentation is kind of a high-level presentation regarding some of the enforcement, uh, mechanism that the state requires, uh, each hauler and each jurisdiction to provide. Uh, namely, uh, there are seven areas, uh, that the state is concerned about with regards to Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Um, and they're listed below under that compliance. So this, this presentation is gonna be a quick overview about the seven, uh, compliance areas and what Athens is ready to do, uh, with the County of Los Angeles, as well as all of our jurisdiction to comply with the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. So first, uh, is the route audit. Um, this is a part that may be unpopular or, uh, people may be most concerned about is if you don't have the right, uh, item in the right container, are these trash police gonna be coming by and issuing citations and fines? Um, that is not Athens' goal at all. Uh, we did, however, um, added additional personnel, added additional vehicle, um, in, of the form of a Jeep Wrangler, uh, that the, um, route auditor will be able to get in and out easily and, uh, tag, um, these barrels, uh, after flipping the lids and looking at, uh, what's in those containers. So the goal here is not to, um, really, uh, to, to penalize, but to educate and to, um, provide some outreach, um, to individual residents who may, uh, be, uh, constantly or not, uh, following, uh, this new ordinance. So as we move forward, uh, there's gonna be a lot more information concerning, uh, these enforcement and compliance. Uh, but that's really Athens' goal. We're not here to penalize. We're here to, uh, educate and to help, uh, residents comply with this new legislation. And with regards to enforcement and compliance, uh, there is a at-a-glance view that we are using, uh, Tableau, which is a big software, data analytics, uh, a data analytic software, uh, that pulls from different disparate forms of data, uh, as well as, uh, a tablet that these route auditors would have. Uh, it would all feed into this one area where county staff, as well as our other, uh, municipal jurisdiction, will be able to log in and look at, uh, these compliance data in a, at-a-glance format. Part of this Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three enforcement compliance includes waste characterization. That's not the traditional waste characterization we perform, uh, on an annual basis where we look at what's coming in, uh, what people are throwing away, but rather, uh, after we sorted through all the green waste and recycling, and, uh, what is the portion of the waste that is not, uh, recycled? Uh, so we can have a better understanding of that waste stream and better understanding of how we can improve the program, uh, for green waste and we're get, uh, capturing that organic waste. So this is a sample screen of what that waste characterization would look like after the material has been sorted at a material recovery facility. So during this process, we'll be doing a lot of in-person, uh, training. We have, uh, a website, which I know Councilmember Wong has been all over and seen a lot of the, uh, uh, outreach posters that we have available. Uh, there is what goes into which can, uh, type of posters that you can, uh, download, print, if they're in PDF format, uh, very user-friendly. But also we have deployed in this last couple of weeks, a what goes where guide. Um, uh, it is a, uh, powered by recyclers, which is a organization that has put together a very user-friendly format that, uh, any customer in any jurisdiction can look up. It's a drop-down menu, and they will be able to put in whatever the type of waste that they're throwing away, and it would give a, an answer as to what, uh, that waste stream would go to. And if that, that website is constantly being updated with the type of material that people are discarding. So that material is already, uh, the recyclers website is already up and running, and it's very, very functional. Uh, we'll be continuing to make updates and make improvements to that, to that page, uh, so that, uh, it will be a very helpful guide as people may have questions about, okay, particular, um, where does light bulb go? Um, and, or, uh, any type of special waste or, uh, anything that they may not know that is recyclable. We're also gonna have, uh, continue to work with the county on printing newsletter, uh, and, uh, that'll be inserted into customer bills and, uh, additional postcards that we'll be deploying, uh, to residents directly to, uh, inform everybody about the outreach, uh, about this new law and what is expected of, uh, of everybody. So again, uh, part of that outreach, uh, is tracking the type of interaction that we have, and we have, uh, hired a team of recycling coordinators that'll be visiting individual customers. Uh, this more applies to the commercial sector, uh, and I know we are, uh, though we are fortunate to have, uh, the entire residential franchise for Altadena. Uh, we're also one of the largest, uh, county, uh, service provider for commercial, uh, sectors. So we'll be, uh, deploying that throughout our county, uh, unincorporated areas with the, uh, commercial accounts as well. So that kind of sums it up, um, about the, uh, the type of data and reporting that we will be, um, getting together and, but it basically pulls from all these different data, and we'll be presenting it to the county in a very, uh, user-friendly fashion. Another big component, uh, of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three is procurement. Not only do we want to get rid of organics, uh, from the landfill, but the bill also aims to, uh, create a market for the product that is, uh, the end result of it. So each jurisdiction would have a goal of either procuring compost or renewable natural gas that's generated in California, uh, to be able to, uh, meet and satisfy this procurement, uh, portion of this, uh, Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Luckily Athens already purchased our, uh, fuel that fuels our truck from California renewable natural gas sources. So in our fuel purchase alone, we will help our jurisdiction, uh, comply with this law. But of course, I know our compost giveaway has been a big hit, and Altadena has been one of the first city, uh, first area that really, uh, embraced our compost giveaway program, and consistently we give, um, twice a year. Uh, it's been, uh, just a, um, I, I love coming to Cal-Altadena and seeing how, uh, popular our compost giveaway events have been. So we'll continue to be doing that and, uh, providing these organic composts to the community garden, as well as, uh, the twice-a-year compost giveaway events. Food recovery, that's a whole nother area that the county, as well as, uh, uh, joint powers authority are being formed to tackle this issue. Um, but Athens has been early, uh, early on adopter for one of the new technology that is available in this area. Food recovery, but pretty much, uh, means, uh, in these different tiers, um, at, starting this year and next year, uh, these different facilities would be, uh, required to identify sources in which to donate their, uh, discarded food, uh, that is not maybe expired, but is still, um, good. Um, and, um, we have embraced this app, uh, it's called Carrot, uh, and Carrot has been adopted as the, uh, a predominant application by a lot of these JPAs that have, uh, um, started these efforts for identifying and, uh, connecting food recovery organization with nonprofits, uh, that will want to have, uh, well, that want to have access to these foods. So think about Carrot, this app, like Uber Eats, but for food that is being, uh, discarded or, uh, about to be expired, uh, where, uh, those organizations, food establishments, uh, food distributors, restaurants, will be able to post the type of, uh, food that they're donating, and nonprofits will be able to go in and log in and then select that material and could, uh, arrange a transportation. So, uh, we've been an early adopter of Carrot's program, and we'll continue to work with them, as well as our regional, uh, JPAs on kind of a Sanguine Valley and, um, foothill communities, uh, food recovery network. So this summarizes my presentation. Athens is ready, willing, able to provide Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three support for all of our jurisdiction, including the County of Los Angeles. Uh, oftentimes with county, uh, it's a really, really large organization, uh, and it's definitely a force to be reckoned with in Sacramento. So, uh, with regards to, uh, meeting, uh, the stringent timeline of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, uh, Senate Bill six nineteen has been adopted that gives jurisdiction additional time to comply with the, uh, each of the facets of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. Uh, however, um, here just to present and report to the town council that Athens stands ready, willing, and able to communicate and to outreach and to educate and to be available to any residents that have questions about, uh, complying with this legislation, uh, we'll be providing, um, uh, direct support through the form of, um, myself, our recycling coordinators, our customer service representatives. And, uh, now I know that there is such a vibrant town council, uh, that can help pass along these great information. I'm, I'm very, very pleased to be here. So again, thank you, Councilmember Wong, for the invitation, and, and, um, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have one question. This is Reggie.
Okay, go ahead, Reggie.
Hi, I actually had a, um, uh, since, uh, uh, come, uh, I'm listening to my words today, but a resident in my existence has tried to have some questions. I'll just forward them to your email, because he had some detailed questions about, uh, the costs of, uh, mulching and procedures. So I, they, it's, it's too long to read, but if I could send these questions to you, and I can respond to him, because he's obviously very interested in the mulching process. So I saw your email, so I will just send these questions to you. Thanks.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, Chris? We can't hear you.
All right. So, uh, my, my question is about compliance more than anything else. Um, what happens to the people that make their own compost or take their compost into the library program? Are you gonna open up that lid and think that we're, we're out of compliance?
No, no, not at all. Um, in fact, we are, um, big supporter of any local, um, you know, keeping that organic waste local. Uh, you're actually saving the transportation cost and transportation of that, uh, that compost. Uh, we have a, uh, organic compost facility in the high desert that is certified, that's organic, and that's the compost. We, we back to Altadena community, but, um, the lid flipping really occurs, um, in the other waste stream where we are finding organics in the, uh, being contaminated in other waste streams. So if you don't have any organics, that's not something that, that's being held against you. In fact, uh, we know that there's a vibrant community of, um, uh, the, the, um, the community gardens, as well as, uh, those that, um, participate in, and probably compost, uh, in their, in their yard. I have a cousin who lives in Altadena, so I know that the unique characteristics and, and, and the, you know, the beautiful landscapes that, uh, uh, many of the homes, uh, maintain. So certainly we, we encourage that, and we're big supporters of, uh, uh, local composting efforts.
Thank you, and thank you for coming today. I appreciate it.
Okay. Your Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, sorry, quick question. Uh, can you just explain quickly, uh, why it's important to put the waste, the, uh, sort of the food waste in the right bin?
Yes, so, um, the goal of the legislation is to eliminate, uh, any organic from being, uh, deposited into the landfill, uh, because in an environment, um, when it's buried, uh, we're covered by the, uh, um, by the daily covering that we, uh, deploy at the landfills, uh, it's devoid of any oxygen. And in that environment, as the food decays, it creates methane gas. So, um, And in that environment, as the food decays, it creates methane gas, so um by. By putting it in the right container, um, all of that green waste, uh, so I think there's a concern too about uh how do you? Put that organic waste, you can separate them in a pail, you can keep it within uh your kitchen. Or in a trash can or in a in a in a lid uh container. Um, we encourage uh without using any bags, just dumping in your green waste uh can. Uh, along with your grass clipping and hopefully that will um be able to address the uh uh. The smelly containers that some people may be concerned about. But we understand that practically our customers would like to keep their containers clean and we understand the necessary. Uh, need for plastic bags, so we have issued some guidance and we will be uh we'll be. Within our uh outreach and education material, we are accepting clear plastic bags. Uh, the reason for clear plastic bags is so that we were able to look into the uh content of the bag and know that it's organic. And then it's gonna go through the sort line and be uh eventually deposited at our organic composting facility. Uh, the bags, however, are gonna be ripped open. In order to liberate its content, but the bags themselves will not be composted. Uh, nor will it be recycled, and that is very, very important disclaimer that uh the calorie cycle must. Uh, requires each jurisdiction or each holler to explain to its uh residents, so we still. Encourage, um, if you can, in a perfect world, go ahead and dump your organic waste in. Along with your grass clipping in that green waste container without bags, but we understand that if you must use bags. Please go ahead and use a clear plastic bag and uh we'll be definitely uh putting that together in 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 very easily digestible format. Uh, through our public outreach efforts.
Thank you.
Is there any more questions? I don't see any more hands or I I looked at both screens, so, okay, thank you very much, that was very informative. Yes, thank you, we look forward to you coming back with more details. Okay, thank you, Ed, bye-bye. Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, the next item is LA County Ha- Housing Element. We're gonna get an update from I- Ayala Scott.
Hi, everybody, um, uh, thank you so much for having me today. Uh, my name is Ayala Scott and I'm with the LA County Department of Regional Planning. And um, I've been invited to present an overview of the housing element uh for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. Um, uh, I believe a colleague of mine um gave a similar presentation in April twenty twenty-one. Um, so some of this will be a repeat, but I also wanted to present. Um, you know, kind of the latest updates and also the next steps um for implementation that you're gonna see rolling out in the next few years. So um, I'm going to go ahead and share my presentation. Um, let's see, are you able to see the presentation yet? Yes?
Yes.
Perfect, um, so. So first I'll um, you know, go over some statistics regarding housing in unincorporated communities. Uh, and then give you sort of a primer on the housing element um and rezoning program and then provide some time for uh questions and feedback. So it doesn't take a professional planner to see that we are in the middle of a housing and homelessness crisis. And the amounts and types of housing are not meeting um the overall need. Um, you know, I'm sure you know of folks that have moved out of um LA County because they can't afford the cost of housing. Um, have relocated to another county or, you know, another state. Um, uh, you know, in order to be able to afford housing, you know, or a lot of adult children are moving in with their parents because they can't afford to buy. Uh, or rent their own place in the neighborhood that they grew up in. Um, in addition, um, you know, homelessness is is, you know, increasing. Um, you know, the the twenty twenty-one homeless count was was not conducted, but. Between uh twenty twenty-one and at twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh homelessness increased by by about thirteen percent. Um, so it's um, it's definitely a a very serious crisis um that everybody um is feeling in some in some way or another. Um, just some quick statistics, um, of all the um households in LA County unincorporated. About um forty-three percent are housing cost burdened, meaning that um there's kind of a rule of thumb for how much of your income. Um, should go to housing costs and it's about um, you know, thirty percent. If you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing costs, it could be rent or or mortgage. Um, you may not have enough money left over for your other necessities. Um, you know, like food or transportation or or health costs. Um, so about forty-three percent of unincorporated households um are uh housing cost burdened. In addition, uh, of of all the uh over three hundred thousand housing units um in unincorporated LA County. Uh, about seventy-seven percent of those are single-family. Um, and although single-family homes provide a really important source of housing uh in the unincorporated areas. Um, it what it means is that there is less capacity for other types of housing to meet the needs of other family types and and family sizes and incomes. Um, there's not enough housing choice for um for everyone who wants to live in unincorporated LA County. And also, um, in addition, um, about fifty-seven percent of homes are owner-occupied. Um, and while owner-occupied homes and homeownership provides, you know, a great source of neighborhood stability. Um, it also leaves out um a lot of people who can't necessarily afford uh to buy their own place. So um, you know, again, um, you know, the supply of housing, um, the the type of housing available. Um, is not meeting the needs of of all unincorporated residents. So uh, there's about a million people in unincorporated LA County and about thirteen percent are sixty-five and over. And that may not seem like a lot, but um during the decade of twenty ten to twenty twenty, there was about thirty percent increase. Uh, in the senior population, um, and in recent years, there's been about a twenty percent increase in senior homelessness. Um, so you know, as people age, um, they have a need for um some maybe smaller, more affordable units, um, you know. Uh, housing that provides more opportunities for social connection um and and active living as they age. Um, so you know, it it's our job uh at the LA County Regional Planning Department to 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 see these trends. Um, and plan for housing um that provides enough choice uh to meet the needs of all segments of the population. So where does the housing element fit into all of this? So the housing element is actually a state requirement. And every local government has to accommodate its fair share of housing. Um, and it's a document that we are required to update every eight years. Um, so we are embarking on a new uh housing element planning cycle, which is twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine. So the um, the foundation of the housing element is something called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation or the RENA. So essentially the state um um projects uh the housing needs uh for all its residents. And you know, those numbers get filtered down to uh the regions and those um, you know, regional. Numbers get filtered down to the local jurisdictions. Um, and each jurisdiction in California is assigned a number of housing units. That um it is projected to need to build in uh in the following eight-year planning cycle in order to accommodate. All the housing needs of its population, so um, so for this uh upcoming planning cycle, um, unincorporated LA County. As a whole, has been assigned a regional housing need allocation of ninety thousand units. So essentially what that means is. Uh, the county unincorporated needs to demonstrate to the state that it is not preventing. Um, that it is not constraining the ability of those ninety thousand units to be built. Um, under land use and zoning regulations counting countywide that um, you know, unincorporated has. A sufficient number of sites with sufficient um allowed density and zoning that collectively. Um, uh, ninety thousand units uh would have the potential to be built uh within an eight-year timeframe. So um, LA County, just like every other jurisdiction, um, is required to. Uh, provided what it's called an adequate site inventory. Um, so basically the county uh inventories all the, you know, parcels of land in its jurisdiction. Um, to try to assess under land use and zoning to try to project. Whether um it would have the capacity to accommodate the ninety thousand units. Um, there are many uh requirements for suitability um in state law. Um, so for example, you know, sites need to have, um, you know, have public watered sewer. Um, you know, there's certain um criteria that need to be met. In order to um accommodate the housing, they need to be of a certain size, et cetera. Um, so the county, um, you know, conducted the adequate sites inventory and. Um, you know, as with many jurisdictions, um, did did not have enough sites to accommodate the ninety thousand units. Therefore, um, the county is required to undertake a rezoning program. Over the next um three years in order to demonstrate um that there is adequate um site potential. So just to be clear, um, the housing element rezoning program itself um does not actually effectuate rezoning. Um, uh, that is, uh, that takes place within um the next three years after the housing element is adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And certified by the state. Um, it does not actually require any property owner to, you know, change anything on their property or to build anything. Nor does it require the county to actually build anything. Um, the the requirement is to demonstrate um the potential and that the county is not um constraining the ability. Of property owners to to build um. Uh, to build, uh, you know, at ninety thousand, a capacity of ninety thousand units um in unincorporated. So the county undergoes many considerations um in ter- uh in terms of selecting sites that. Are appropriate um for demonstrating that potential capacity. Um, you know, considerations such as where should multifamily housing be built? And uh, the county has to also demonstrate. Um, you know, the likelihood of a site to be suitable for a multifamily housing development um in in the upcoming eight years. Um, so part of the many factors that we take into consideration is, you know, trying to avoid um environmentally sensitive. Or naturally constrained areas, um, such in particular, the fire hazard severity zones. Um, significant ecological areas and hillside management areas. And uh coastal zone, which has many, um, you know, fire-prone and um ha- habitat um areas as well. And in terms of, you know, trying to figure out where uh would be more appropriate for future housing opportunities. Um, you know, the county looks at things like transit proximity, uh proximity to amenities and services. Um, areas that are already served by some sort of existing infrastructure. Um, in addition to that, the county looks at um distribution of sites um throughout the unincorporated areas. Um, equitably. And so um, we take into account um concentrations of housing um and and we look at. Um, other factors, um, such as access to educational and economic opportunity um as uh demonstrated by the state. The county also looks at things like um proximity to environmental hazards, freeway proximity. Um, you know, things like um, you know, disproportionate uh pollution burden. Um, and has to kind of balance all of these different considerations and requirements um by the state in order to come up with. Um, you know, sites that will show the state that the county has, um, you know, suitable land available. Um. Uh, the other considerations we take into account. Um, you know, how likely is a site to be available or suitable for multifamily housing development? If there's existing buildings, you know, how old are they? Um, you know, the older uh, the older the buildings are, in some cases, the um, the owner may. Um, be more inclined to redevelop them um in the near future. We look at things like, uh, is the land more valuable than the improvements? Um, if the site is contaminated, such as a gas station, for example, that could. Um, you know, kind of be a deterrent to being able to develop housing on the site since. It would require significant time and money for cleanup. Um, and we also look at um site potential, um, you know, if if. Not many more units could be accommodated on the site than than currently, then it's it's not considered as. As um useful in terms of demonstrating, um, you know, site capacity. So we've created um a housing element update rezoning program uh website, it's an interactive map. Um, and I can provide the uh the link to you. Um, but basically this is a way to actually zoom in parcel by parcel and view the sites that are um. That are proposed for rezoning, um, and as you can see here, the um, you have the ability to get. Um, to scroll through and get the whole um. Background on um the county's methodology and also um look at the individual super- supervisory district. Um, uh, rezoning programs, so. Um, you could go to supervisory district five and click on Altadena and actually zoom in and and view um and view those sites. So what I'll do is, oh yes, so here's the link at at the top. Um, that takes you to, if you scroll down from that link, it'll it'll take you to what we call the interactive uh story map. So um, so these are um screenshots of locations um in Altadena that are proposed for. Um, land use policy or zone changes. Um, so primarily they're concentrated um on Lake Avenue between Pine and and Calaveras um and and El Malino. Uh, as well as there's some parcels on Raymond Avenue um south of Woodbury. And so um, if you look here, um, there's basically a couple of things that govern. Uh, what can be built on a site and one is um the land use policy, which determines the general. Intended uses for a site and the um, the density ranges, the number of units per acre that's allowed on a site. As well as um the zoning, which um talks about the more specific things like um development standards. Um, you know, how tall buildings can be, things like that. Um, uh, the specific uh permit processes that are applicable to different specific types of uses. So combined, it's the land use and zoning that determine um what can be built on a site. Um, and then in the interactive story map, you'll be able to see both um the land use policy and the corresponding zone changes, so they always. The two always, they kind of work hand in hand. Um. So um, so for the existing sites, um, you know, particularly along lake. Um, these are um currently in the community plan, they're called mixed-use center. Um, and they allow uh a maximum density of twenty-two units per acre. Um, and they have a multifamily and commercial zoning. Um, and so um, the proposed maximum density would be uh fifty units uh per acre. Um, our approach was to take whatever is the existing and do um, you know, look at what is the one, the next. Um, denser category up, so um, one category up from what's existing. Um, so the next category up is um is called general commercial. And that allows, um, you know, similar to mixed-use center, it allows um both commercial and residential. Um, but with a higher um, higher density uh for residential, so fifty units per acre. Um, and in here, um, many of these sites are already commercially zoned, um, so they don't actually need a zone change. Um. But for um the R two and R three, um, those would become C three in order to match um the land use policy. And that also allows multifamily. Um, and these would also allow the existing uses to continue um as is. And then um for the Raymond Avenue, south of Wood of Woodbury sites. Um, the existing is um twenty-two units per acre with um zoning of R three. Um, and the proposed is um fifty units per acre um with the zoning of R four, so again, one level, um, one level up. And so um, the next steps, um, uh, so the Board of Supervisors um adopted the housing element. Update on November thirtieth. Um, and now we're in early twenty-two, um, the State Department of Housing and Community Development reviews. All the housing elements from all the jurisdictions and has to um, you know, ensure that it complies with all the um. With all the laws governing um housing elements and then provides certification. Um, sometime early twenty twenty-two, so we're kind of just waiting on that. Um. And essentially, um, what certification does is it ensures that the county remains eligible. For state funding for things like transportation funds, road funds. Um, uh, infrastructure, affordable housing, funding, um, all these kind of critically needed um. Funding sources that um that that we would not be eligible for without a state-compliant um housing element. So um. So we are wait, we are currently waiting on that and anticipate um certification, um, you know, within the next couple of months. Uh, but as I said before, uh, the actual rezoning program, um, the state allows us until twenty twenty-four. To actually complete rezoning. And so um, the way this would be done is through uh area, what we call area plans. So um, unincorporated county has eleven um distinct planning areas. Um, and these neighborhoods um here fall into what's called the. And these neighborhoods here fall into what's called the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan. And so essentially by twenty twenty-four, there would be a comprehensive planning effort for all these communities that would implement the rezoning, but also provide a capital improvement plan. You know, because, you know, we recognize that along with additional housing opportunities come additional infrastructure needs in order to support those. And so the capital improvement plan basically identifies the needed infrastructure improvements such as sewer, transportation, waste management, stormwater, public water, open space. And then identifies the financing that's required and, and the financing sources that will be pursued in order to, in order to be able to implement those improvements. You know, as new development comes in, in the future. So the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan, you know, it has not gotten underway yet, but regional planning will be forming a team to work with communities on this, keep them informed and engage with them on, on the rezoning program as it's rolled out by twenty twenty-four. So I wanted to put that on your radar because, you know, DRP will be working with the community and, and keeping you guys informed. And I just wanted to, you know, introduce that to, to you guys and let you know that. And then in terms of contacting us in the meantime, you can definitely reach out to our team at housing@planning.laccounty.gov. And you can also visit our housing element webpage. Moving forward, you can definitely stay in touch with the housing team. We work on a countywide level. But there will be a dedicated team that will be working with the West San Gabriel Valley communities that will be formed in order to, to work on that future comprehensive planning effort. So at this time, I will be happy to take your questions.
And just the, just because of the time restraints that we're on and that it's getting later, I just asked that the questions. If you can email the questions and not have an answer tonight, that'll be good. But if you need your answer tonight, please ask your question. Any questions? Dorothy?
I'm just asking because this would cover something that I was going to bring up at the Safe Streets Committee is right now, regional planning is looking to organize conversations on parking. How does this align with?
Yes, yes. Are you referring to the, the countywide parking ordinance?
Yes.
Yes. And so a team may have, the team that's working on that probably, probably spoke with you. So actually, yes, the, there will be kind of a comprehensive update to the county's basic parking regulations, many of which have not been updated in decades. And so basically right now, what you have is the county has kind of a patchwork of different parking regulations in different places. You know, it's, and it's, 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 it's not really a consistent approach. And not only that, but, you know, many of the parking regulations are, are extremely outdated and no longer reflect, you know, the kind of development that, that we see. And some parking reduction strategies, you know, that, you know, maybe well intended, maybe didn't have their intended effect. So it's, it's kind of assessing what, what has worked and what has not worked in terms of parking strategy. So, you know, like you, you know, we look forward to those, to those findings very much and, you know, yes, you know, the parking regulations will be updated and if necessary crafted. You know, also as part of the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan. But yeah, we definitely are connecting the dots. And actually the team that's working on the parking study is actually looking at the rezoning program and they're looking at those sites and trying to, you know, project, you know, based on, you know, the, the need to demonstrate capacity for housing. How does that interact with the parking requirements? So specifically that is something that they, that they are looking at.
Okay, thank you for that. And Diane did send all of us some information and we can find out more if we sign up for the study. So it's in your email. So, but thank you. And that was a lot of information. Thank you for bringing it to us.
Sure. Yeah, sorry. I realize it's quite dense. But, but, but yes, feel free to follow up with me and, and look forward to engaging with you all in the future.
Hi, I don't want to hold anything up, but I think it's important, I think it's important to note that the West San Gabriel Valley section, what the county has done is, is for the first time, I think ever split up all these areas and are going to look at each area individually. That's what I've been told by the county. So that that West San Gabriel is set up because we have different, different setups and needs and, and requirements, everything else from, for house, extra housing. You know, different than some other area that's further south or, or up in the valley, you know, the, the Antelope Valley and stuff. So they're, they're, they're really trying to personalize it as much as they can to an area, which they haven't ever done before. And we should be happy about. So that's all. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks Diane. Okay. Is there any, anything else that needs to be said tonight? Okay. So we're going to move on because we have two items left and it's already nine o'clock. So, and we have our voting to do. So, okay. So Dorothy, and I keep saying Dorothy, but I should say Councilmember Wong. Your Safe Streets report?
Yeah, this actually segues really perfectly. So it is January twenty twenty-two. So we're going to have a Safe Streets check-in meeting on January twenty-fourth, which is Mobility Mondays at six o'clock. And so, yeah, there's definitely a lot of sort of outreach going on based on this regional planning, including metro transit. So we can kind of talk about those things because there's also a San Gabriel Valley Transit feasibility study going on and lots of fun stuff to talk about how we move around. So I'll keep that short. So join us Monday, six P M, January twenty-fourth. Talking about transportation and mobility. And don't forget that January twenty-fifth, Tuesday, the Slow Streets will actually be discussed with Matt Dubio will be there. He is with Vision Zero L A County Public Works, talking also traffic safety and mobility, focusing on the slow streets. So any questions you have, bring that Tuesday. That's it. Thank you.
And, and remind, send us a reminder Dorothy. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move on and I am going to turn it over to our election chair, Chris O'Malley.
Good evening, council. It's a, it's a long one. We're going to try to do this quick. We've got a special election to run. Let me find my thing. Go, come on. Here's the format of our special election today. Each candidate is going to have two minutes to present to the council. We have four candidates. I don't think Mr. Malone was able to come. I have his statement. I will read it for him. Speak orders alphabetical by last name. You have two minutes. I will time it and then I'll call it when it's done. So please try to limit yourself. Voting will take place via Zoom poll. I will put the poll up. Only council members are allowed to pull, sorry to vote. I know there are a lot of other people on this call. Please do not interfere with the vote. Results will be shared publicly after all council members have voted. If a candidate receives a majority right off the bat, they are seated, they are sworn in. Captain Williams has been kind enough to offer to be the county representative here tonight. Thank you, Captain Williams. If nobody wins the majority vote, we got to have a runoff between the two largest pluralities. So without further ado, Shawna Dawson Beer, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Hi, sorry. I said to do all the unmuting and video running. Hi, everybody. I am Shawna Dawson Beer. I know some of you, some of you I don't. I'm a native Angelino. I was born and raised here in L A. My husband and I moved to Altadena about ten years ago. It'll actually be eleven in March. We first moved here as renters and soon after that, having fallen in love with the community, its history, its diversity, we're very lucky. We were able to purchase our home. I have been active in our community since moving here. I was first introduced to the town council, working with Councilmember Corey, and have since had the pleasure of working quite a bit with Billy Malone, both of whom represent our tract. I've previously represented tract forty-six oh two on the land use committee. I am familiar with how the county operates and how we function as an unincorporated town within it. Five years ago, I created a neighborhood group on Facebook called Beautiful Altadena. This was, my goal was to have that be an alt to next door. And it's now grown with multiple subgroups. We have gardens, cooks, a book club to a community of more than 10,000 residents moderated by a diverse team that also includes a local small and micro business directory called Shop Altadena with topical subdirectories, including one specific to local black owned, small and micro business. Yesterday we launched a new subgroup called B A Real Estate. You can find us some on Facebook and on Instagram. I'm fortunate to have good relationships with other community stakeholders and know many of our small and micro business owners personally. I've previously enjoyed good relationships with Captain Sims at Station thirteen, with Captain Jacobs at our sheriff's station, as well as with a few of our local deputies. I was actually one of the people who worked with Marina Del Rey's community leaders when our station was on the chopping, chopping block. Very glad it's still here. Good to meet you, Captain Williams, virtually. I also have a good relationship with our library district is I have worked with our former director, Medica Tey, on some events in the past. More recently with the current team to help develop columns during the pandemic and to host a live virtual Q and A for Measure Z. Currently I'm one of the at-large members on the library's district community focus group, along with Veronica, Kristen Allen. Professionally, I am a serial entrepreneur. I've launched and successfully operated multiple businesses while working with thousands of others. I won't get into too much detail here, given our time constraints, but my resume is on file for anyone interested and you can always find me on LinkedIn. And being entirely candid, having lost, oh, that's fine. Well, I will say to close, to close out, I was speaking so fast, but to close out, I just wanted to say my hat is off and cheers to the other candidates because not many people step up and more of us need to. So thank you.
Thank you for the statement. Tracy, I'm going to mess this up. Secondello?
Checonello.
One more time?
Checonello.
Checonello.
Checonello, yes. Yes.
You've got two minutes.
Okay, great. Good evening, council members and everybody watching on Zoom. As you just heard Chris say, my name is Tracy Checonello. As you might have read on my statement, I've been a resident of Altadena for almost twenty years. I've lived in Pasadena my entire life. I'm retired and raising my family. We've been members of Saint Mark's Episcopal Church since two thousand and ten. And I've had the opportunity to serve on various leadership roles. For instance, I was a warden for five years, three years as senior warden. And senior warden, think of it as like the chairperson of the church's governing body and second to the rector. Last fall, Nick Aronson told me about the vacant council seat for our tract forty-six oh two. I thought the opportunity to volunteer with town council was really interesting for a few reasons. One, the experience would broaden my knowledge of our local government. Two, my child will be leaving for college in the fall, so my dance card is going to be a little lighter. And three, it would be a treat to partner with Nick. Nick and I collaborated on a project before. And what I appreciated about the experience with him was that we have different perspectives, but we were able to come to the table and work through whether we agreed on something or disagreed, we were able to negotiate and come to an understanding and successfully finish our project. I believe that tract forty-six oh two would benefit from being represented by a team that's diverse in experience and perspectives. And if elected, this is what I would bring to the town council. Thank you for considering me.
Thank you, Ms. Checonello. All right. Paige Eves.
Hi, good evening. I'm Paige Eves. We, my husband and I have owned our home on Fair Oaks since two thousand and eight. And COVID isolation has been a time where we have become even better acquainted with our neighborhood and really appreciate our immediate neighbors who have decided to be in neighborhood. And now we're talking about mapping our neighborhood for emergency preparedness. So I bring a number of qualifications to a town council position. I have a master's in public policy as well as a master's in divinity. I have two jobs. I work part-time as a Methodist minister in La Mirada. And, and the other half of my life, I have a strategic job with the denomination. I help us leverage underutilized church properties for mission and ministry. So over the last few years, I have learned a lot about how affordable housing does and does not get built in our state. I really appreciated the presentations from, from D R P and from Habitat. I've run literally thousands of meetings in my life. I value good preparation. I value excellent facilitation. I understand that the best solutions emerge from, from diverse, multiple opinions. I'm comfortable with budgets and spreadsheets and even Robert's Rules of Order, and I don't love it. It's not my favorite. And I haven't heard a lot of it here tonight, so that's a blessing. So I would look forward to, to getting to know you and working with you. Whether or not you elect me this evening, I'll become more involved in the life of our beautiful Altadena. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Last but not least, Mr. Billy Malone, who was unable to make it today. I'm going to read a statement into the record for him. To whom it may concern, I would like to submit my application for the Altadena Town Council for census tract forty-six oh two. The following is just a few of the things that makes me qualified to sit as a representative on the Altadena Town Council. Six years as past Altadena Town Council member, four years as A T C Executive Committee member, five years on Land Use Committee, two years on A T C Education Committee, seven years of Altadena Chamber of Commerce Board Member, three years as Altadena Chamber of Commerce President. Several years' experience working within the community as a volunteer in many areas, including with the Pasadena Unified School District. Fifteen-year resident of Altadena. Thank you for the opportunity to submit my requests, sincerely, Billy Malone. I'm going to put up a poll. I'm going to remind people that are on the call that are not part of the council. Please do not vote. And this should work. Oh no, I can't vote though. You guys have that?
I see it.
So because I hosted it, I'm not able to vote. Veronica, I'm going to text you my vote if you could do it for me, please.
Chris, for some reason I can't vote either. I can see it and I can see the votes.
Yeah.
So do you want me to? Okay. Do you want me to send it to you?
Send it to Veronica.
Send it to Veronica. Yes, we'll do.
Oh no, don't send it to Veronica. Yeah, you send it to Veronica. Oh man, yeah, because she's the only one that's not voting.
Well, yeah, so she can just.
Can you just take away your co-host? Or not really, huh?
Oh, you probably could take away mine.
Yeah, take away Victoria.
Victoria's.
See if that works.
And then Chris, you text me your vote and I'll put it.
Okay, I can vote now. Thank you.
Teamwork. Look at this.
Okay, I can't.
Dr. Thomas, you can't vote?
I mean, I can't, I'm pushing the, the name, but I'm not getting.
There should be a little radio button by all the names, like a little, that you have to click the button.
Click the circle next to the name.
Do you see that?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. And then hit submit. Yeah.
Is everybody in? Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Yeah, that's everybody. Okay.
Well, there should only be fourteen.
Yeah, we have fourteen.
Did you vote?
I gave it to Veronica. She voted. She voted for me.
Oh, all right. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. So the results are in. I'm going to display them. And Billy Malone has recaptured the seat with fifty-seven percent of the votes. Thank you all for running. I hope you stay involved in the community regardless of the fact that you didn't win the seat. Your, your involvement is absolutely appreciated and thank you for being here tonight.
And I would recommend to Tracy and Paige, and I know Shawna's been on land use before, but to get on land use. uh, Tracy and Paige, and I know Shawna's been on land use before, but to get on land use, that's one of the, that is the most important thing we do.
Can, can I say, come to the land use meetings? Like, the land use committee is full, right? Veronica, so we would love to have people come to the meetings, though.
Right, but Billy may, yeah, Billy may want to have help. But yeah, come, I mean, you'll learn a lot and you'll be prepared. Okay, can we have Captain, we, oh, Billy's not here to swear in.
Uh, we're gonna have to do that some other time, I suppose.
Okay, we'll do it at, Captain Williams, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sorry, Captain Williams, for, for keeping you here the whole time, but.
That's okay.
For coming, though.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Problem.
And thank you to everybody for being patient, we did a lot in this meeting. I mean, there is a lot in there, I didn't realize that until we started doing it. And so um, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Oh, I forgot.
General public comment.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Was there anything submitted?
Yes, so uh, one.
She had something.
One submission, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, this is from uh, Kathy Kuhin, sorry if I mispronounced it. Dear Altadena Town Council, the county of Los Angeles is preparing a climate action plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from unincorporated county areas, including Altadena. The town council needs to be involved in this effort to represent our community in this important policy area. How do we get the town council involved in this area and other policy areas relevant to Altadena? I'm hoping there will be some discussion today.
Well, we don't um, respond to public comment at the meeting, but if you, you know who census tract she's in, maybe forward that to them and they can contact her and, and speak more on it, go ahead, Dorothy.
Yes, thank you, one more, uh, we got a notice from uh, Helen Romero at SoCal Gas. So I will be posting their tips on uh, how to manage your bill during the colder months through the rest of winter. That concludes, I can read it, but that's kind of the gist of it.
Okay, all right, is there anything else? Can I get a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been second and are there any um, objections to a journey?
No. Dr. Thomas is saying something.
No.
Okay, so thank you to everybody, thank you, it's my first meeting, so thank you and um,
Good job.
I look forward to the rest of them, the rest of the year, thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.